I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council to order. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Council President Protam Michael Londo.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilwoman Green is absent, excused. Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Protam Londo.
Present.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
Acquorum, Miss President.
Thank you. We now move into special presentations and announcements first. I think it appropriate at this time that we address the tragedy that occurred in Oxford here in the state of Michigan this past week. I think we all know someone who is connected in somehow to some of the families that are there at that school, and it shakes us all to our core. And I think it's important that we as people and as legislators maintain vigilance and understanding our youth and knowing how to engage with them and not looking the other way. It's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we are engaged, we're staying active, and if you see something, we say something. But more so, it's very important that we not only remember them, but we make sure that we do what's right in their honor by our actions as we move forward. At this time, we're going to take a moment of silence and observe the lives that we lost in Oxford this week. Thank you. Up next, we bring Chief Jedrusik out as he swears in one of our new officers. Chief?
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to ask the mayor and the city clerk to join me for a quick second. Typically, council, we do these at events outside of the city council meeting, but I thought tonight it might be kind of neat. We've got one officer that we're going to swear in tonight, and we thought it might be a good opportunity for our residents to actually meet our newest Westland police officer and kind of see how we go through the ceremony process with them. So these events are short and sweet, but they're important to us. I've said it time and time again, we've had over 300 different men and women wear the Westland police uniform, and we've been in departments since 1966. So anytime we have the opportunity to swear in a new officer, it's important to us and special, and we want to take this opportunity to share it with the residents. So I'm going to ask our newest officer, Cole Rice, to step up here with his fiancee. And just want to take a quick second to introduce Cole. Cole Rice grew up in Garden City, Michigan. He's a graduate from Garden City High School. He graduated from Schoolcraft College with an associate's degree in criminal justice. He's also a graduate from the Wayne County Regional Police Academy. He was one of our Westland police service aides for two years prior to being sworn in as a police officer, and he served as a trainer for our program. In addition, he was actually one of our police explorers for four years prior to the police service program. So he's been with us for a while. We've gotten to know Officer Rice, and we're excited to have him now as a police officer. So congratulations, and we're going to have the clerk swear in here.
Thank you, Chief. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Cole Rice.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Westland.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Westland.
The Policies and Procedures of the Westland Police Department.
The Policies and Procedures of the City of Westland Police Department.
And faithfully perform the duties of.
And faithfully perform the duties of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Once again, congratulations. Thank you and welcome, Officer Rice. Now I'd like to welcome up Miriam Katie, who's going to give us some update on Relay for Life.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me, Mayor, Council President, Protam, all the city council and the chiefs, and our great audience behind us, a lot of faces that I did see at Pizza Palooza, which I was so thankful for. I just wanted to talk about our amazing success for our Pizza Palooza and what that is. Also, we started this a couple years, few years ago, and of course, we haven't been able to have it in person for a bit, but it's a Pizza Palooza and a quarter auction benefit it. And a lot of people ask what the quarter auction is. So that is actually a really cool function that we put in place. We have prizes. It's $10 to get in for the adults, $5 to get in for the kids, and they were able to bet on prizes that each panel was worth a quarter, and it's just a really cool function. And Mike and a few others were there and had a great time. And the biggest part of this is, of course, inviting our local pizza places to come and be our vendors there. They bring their specialties pizza. The $10 or the $5 gets as much as you want to eat, and then at the end of that, they would bet on which was their favorite pizza. So it was pretty cool. And who we had there, we were so thankful to have these vendors. Vizzi's Pizza, Palace Manja Pizza and Catering, Slice of the 80s, Domino's Pizza, Luigi's Pizzeria, and Sammy's. So we were so thankful for all of them for being there for sure. And our grand prize winner, though, was Vizzi's. They got the top vote, and close behind them was Slice of the 80s. And so how we appreciate them, of course, tonight, telling the public out there how much we really want to utilize our local businesses, and this was, I think, a big way also to talk about at least the pizzerias for this evening. And so what we do for them is when they join us, we give them an automatic sponsorship for the Relay for Life. We advertise them consistently till the event and throughout the event, especially our big winner with giving them certificates, things like that. So we definitely are so proud of our community and so glad at the turnout we had for raising over $2,000 in this small event. I mean, we are so thankful. So just look for other events coming up, and I just want to thank our community. Thank you so much.
Okay, now we move to, excuse me, questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Seeing none, I'll close input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Hold on one second. I apologize. Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. I'd like to move items E, F, and G to new business for discussion, please.
It's a motion to move items E, F, and G to new business. Is there any support?
Support.
Support by Councilman McDermott. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green is absent, excused. Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Protam Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Councilman Godbout, your late sign, is that not accurate?
No.
Okay. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held November 15, 2021. Approval of request from Don Nicholson Enterprises LLC to organize and promote the 10th Annual All-American Wayne Road Cruise, which will take place on June 18, 2022. Approval of bid for professional park drainage improvement services at J.C. Park. Administration recommended the loan bidder, HMC LLC, total amount not to exceed $59,690. Approval of purchase of three interceptor utility vehicles for the police department. This purchase will be from North Brothers Ford in the amount not to exceed $98,934.18. The last item approved on the consent calendar. Approval of schedule of regular meetings of the Westland City Council for the 2022 calendar year. Moving to new business. Item one. Confirmation of appointment of Bridget Jawad Hockem to the Economic Development Corporation takes increment finance authority, brownfield redevelopment authority, to fill an unexpired term with the term to expire March 19, 2023.
Support.
It's a motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Is Ms. Jawad, are you in there? Can you please stand and be recognized? Sure. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I did. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jawad, for being here tonight. Thank you, Council, for moving forward on her appointment. Just a little bit of background, if you take a look at Ms. Jawad's portfolio that was included with the packet, you'll see that she's got 30 years' experience in the real estate market. She owns commercial real estate here in the city of Westland, and I think she's going to be a great addition to our board, and she's very well-respected all throughout southeast Michigan. So I think she's going to be a great addition to the board.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Just as an aside to the council, consent items E, F, and G, at the request of the council president, will come following the two remaining appointment procedures. So, new business. Item two. Excuse me, one second. Reappointment of Mel Toxstein to the, I've got to look for it, excuse me here. Confirmation of reappointment to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 24, 2024.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, if I could, actually.
I'll just make comment on both of the appointments coming up, both Mr. Toxstein and Mr. Weiss, and they're both in the audience here tonight, sitting next to each other. Mr. Toxstein's a longtime Westland resident. He's served on the Board of Review since 2010, and he's been the chair of the Commission on Aging. He served on that commission since 2005. And Mr. Weiss is also a longtime Westland resident, a real estate agent, and he's served on the Board of Review since 2012. And they both do a great job, and the Board of Review will be meeting here shortly, so this appointment's very timely.
All right. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mel, stand up, be recognized.
New business. Item three. Confirmation of reappointment of Dennis Weiss to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term with the term to expire December 6, 2024.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski.
Support.
Supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Sir, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Mr. Clerk?
New business. Item 3A. Approval of amended and extended agreement regarding Marshall Upper Elementary, due diligence, and if approved, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city. Administration requested an extension of the agreement until March 1, 2022, should conduct further analysis on the premises.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Godbout. Mayor?
So, council, what you have before you tonight is asking you to approve the agreement that we have with the school district on Marshall Upper Elementary School. As you know, the council's approved us to a due diligence period which has expired. This will take us through March 1, which will allow us to complete our due diligence. We've been using Plant, Moran, Cressa to put together a capital needs assessment on the building, and their work is just about complete. We'd be asking the city council for a study session in January to have them update us on where we're at with that. The school board, the school superintendent's been very favorable about working with us. They understand the need for additional time. It was their plan to demolish the building in 2021, and they know that that's not going to happen over the winter months, so they're definitely on board. And I had a chance to talk with the school superintendent today just to make sure that there was no last-minute changes, and we feel comfortable asking council to extend this through March 1.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, and thanks, Mayor, for that update. That's really all I was looking for here. It's been quite a few months already, and we, council hasn't heard anything about what the findings were. And something that does concern me going forward is that now that we're extending it, we're agreeing to pay all the utilities, seasonal property maintenance, and so forth. We don't have a dollar amount for that, so I don't know what part of the budget that's going to come out of and how much it's going to be. I'd like to know that before voting on this.
Through the chair. One of the changes in this agreement was that we would not reimburse the city or reimburse the school district for the utilities over the winter period, and we would help maintain the exterior parking lot as far as plowing. What those costs are going to be, we have historical costs over there. I don't have those in front of me. It's not a budget item at this point. I think that what we'll probably see is one of two things happen. One is that the number's going to be nominal, and we ask the school district, maybe at future date, to forgive that commitment. Or if not, maybe instead of the city buying the land for a dollar, maybe it's a dollar plus the utility cost over the winter. So we think it's going to be pretty nominal. It is worthwhile to note that the school district will still insure the building, so that's not going to change.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 3B. Introduction of ordinance 248A110, an ordinance to amend the Westland City Code by amending Section 110-2.1 to extend the temporary moratorium on processing requests for land use approvals, permits, or licenses in commercial or industrial areas of the city to establish a caregiver grow and cultivation operation under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act.
Is there a motion? It's a motion by Councilman McDermott. Is there support? Supported by Councilman Godbout. Mr. Fassone?
Yeah, just to point out that this is to be extended again for 12 months in part because, as you know, the city's been involved with litigation on its other conditional licensees. So that process took up a fair bit of the last 12 months as we waited to see where the courts were. Courts ruled in favor of the city. It's now on appeal. But in terms of trying to move this issue forward while that issue was still in play, it seemed prudent to wait to see what sort of direction, if any, we would get from the court. So that's the basis of this additional extension.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Just to tee off the city attorney's comments, this is going to extend it for another year. Do we know that the existing court case with the other licensing is going to proceed that long, or will it be sooner?
It's like you've just asked me who's going to win the national championship game. We had the right answer. I would think we will have a clear path forward in the next 12 months. I certainly am hopeful about that. Don't necessarily hold me to the prediction, though.
Thank you. I will support it at this point, but you know, this is something that really I think we do need to move forward on without a moratorium. We have to see what the state law's going to do. I know a lot of the caregiver network's being discussed right now, but I do think it would be a benefit if we did allow that in the city. It's not storefronts like you would see with the other licenses. But when that court case does get wrapped up, I would like to remove this moratorium and sit down with council and talk about how we're going to go about handling this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilman McDermott.
Just real quick, in regards to the moratorium, this is something through the chair to the city attorney that we can then go back on a future agenda item and amend to pull this off the books, correct? If the court cases get settled sooner?
That would be correct. This is up to, not a requirement of. So if the pathway got clear in the next couple of months, I suspect your planning director would be eager to bring some things forward to council to address this issue. I know he would be, because he and I have talked about this regularly, trying to sort out a clear path forward that just doesn't result in additional litigation.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 3C. Approval of memo of understanding with the YMCA of Metro Detroit regarding the exploration of shared opportunities for the former Marshall Upper Elementary School site located at 35100 Bayview, and if approved, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city. The term of the agreement shall be five years upon execution by both parties or until terminated.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mayor?
Through the chair. So tonight, we have with us CEO of the Detroit Metropolitan YMCA, Ms. Helene Ware, and the president of the Detroit Metro YMCA Board of Directors, Wayne County Circuit Court Judge David Allen. Earlier tonight, it looks like they gave everybody a copy of the 2020 annual report from the YMCA, a list of some community programs that the Y is currently offering. And with this memorandum of understanding, certainly we can invite up the members of the Y to answer any questions. Just to preface that, I'd say that earlier today, Ms. Ware and I had a conversation with the school district superintendent, Dr. John Dignan. We talked about the YMCA's ideas for the building, and the school district came away from that conversation, that they were very comfortable with it. I think that one of the concerns of the school board was that, you know, what were we going to utilize the building for? And they have certain things that they would not like to see there, like maybe a charter school or something like that. But I think they were very comfortable, and Ms. Ware and Judge Allen, maybe we can ask them to say a few words, is there a level of interest in discussing the MOU?
Definitely. Would the representatives from YMCA like to approach the podium and give us a little brief introduction, followed by any questions from the council?
Well, good evening, council and Mayor Wild. We're just delighted to be here with the opportunity to have a conversation about supporting the community in whatever way seems appropriate in terms of some health and wellness programming, programming for children, use of facilities. We know that promotion of health is so important, particularly even more than ever with what's happened with the pandemic. And we'd love to be a partner in what sounds like it could be a potentially really interesting and great project for the community. So we're just happy to be able to enter into a conversation. If we could, that would be great. And I'll let our chair of our board, Judge Allen, is a volunteer with the Y for many years, and he can say a few words as well.
Council President, council, Mr. Mayor? I'm happy to be here and address any questions you may have about the project. We are delighted to have an opportunity to serve the citizens of Westland and in this area as a YMCA, and we have a long history. We are the oldest nonprofit in the metropolitan Detroit area, because I believe perhaps the state of Michigan, we've been here 170 years.
Oh, they're profit.
Sorry? So, been around a long time. We've served a lot of people. We have multiple programs that we'd like to bring to the community as well as our health and fitness component as well. And we're looking forward to working with the mayor and council and the community to put together a facility that we can be proud of and that you folks in the community can be proud of, so.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, can you really briefly just explain the MOU and what an MOU is for everybody?
So this is really an update of a memorandum of understanding between the parties that outlines sort of the rules for working together, what we're going to work together, the city would work with the YMCA on. It has a length of time on it, but like many agreements, it also has an out, an out that is either party can exercise if you get to the point and say, jeez, this isn't going to be what we thought it was going to be. So in this instance, there's a 30-day out for either party. But that's the memorandum of understanding, sets sort of the basic premise for how we're going to try to work together. As this progresses and there is more. As this progresses and there is more detail about what programs, what costs, how costs might be shared, space issues, there'll be further documentation and contractual agreements. This, if you've read this and go, well, this is kinda short and it doesn't cover everything. It's not designed to cover everything. It actually is designed to be short enough that you can read it and understand it. I think that's probably something the, the judge can appreciate, right? We can actually understand this. So that's what you have in your document and, in your packet and in the purpose of the MOU.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I appreciate that. Now, at this time, are there any questions or input from the council? Any questions from the council? You do, Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, you know, this is something I would have liked to sit down in a study session with council to talk about. You know, going back three or four years ago, we were having 40 study sessions a year. This year, up until today, we've only had 12, and things just aren't being discussed. And I think something as important as a rec center and what we're gonna do should be discussed with council before we move forward. You know, and I guess we'll find out if this does pass. I, I'd like to see what the cost difference would be with, with the Y running the potential rec center or having our own employees run the rec center. Personally, I'd like to see our own employees run it. We'd have better control over different types of programming, several, several other things. And I thought at this point, we don't know exactly what Marshall's gonna be yet. I've heard it's gonna be a senior center several times this year, and it's, the Y typically does programming with youth. So I think this is something that we should put on hold personally until we have a study session about it. You know, I know the Wayne Rec Center went over to Hype, which is another nonprofit, and they didn't have control over whether or not the ice rink was gonna stay, whether the pool was gonna stay. They, they took the pool out. So I just wanna be careful in moving forward on this. I do think that Westland needs a rec center, absolutely. I think that'd be a great thing. But how we're gonna go about doing that, I'm not sure at this point if Marshall is even the right, right place to do it. So I, I can't support this item at this point. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, if I could, through the chair, first of all, council, this is a non-monetary issue here, so what we're doing is formalizing our, our agreement to work together. I had mentioned previously a study session with the city council in January where we would receive our, an update from Plant, Rand, Cressa on the, the condition of the building and the space requirements. On that same night, we'd also invite the YMCA to come and, and give them a little bit more time to talk about what that would look like. I, I would say that moving forward, the, the conversation is probably around a community center more than a rec center, because the, the building is 140,000 square foot. The YMCA participated in our visioning sessions with, with the, the community and I think as part of that, they identified about 65,000 square foot, which would make, give them plenty of space to create a modern YMCA. So that leaves other opportunities for the building, and we talked about some of those over the, over the last year, and I mentioned some of those in my State of the City. So what I'd ask council to do is, I think it's important that we enter into this formal understanding so we can continue those conversations. It's something that the, the board from the YMCA, this is one of their requirements, you know. Ms. Ware and I have had several conversations, but I think at the end of the day, their board would feel more comfortable if there was some sort of formalized agreement between our two cities, or between our two organizations.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Goddow.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green is, and excuse Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Pro Tem Landau.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
New business, item four, approval of resolution authorizing partial settlement of the national prescription opiate litigation. If approved, this authorizes the mayor, city clerk, and attorneys for the city to enter into this national settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson, Cardinal, Cardinal &amp; McKesson, and Amerisource, and to execute the necessary paperwork to effectuate the resolution.
Motion by Councilman Landau, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mr. Fasson?
Thank you, Council President. We had a study session on this and in your packet for the board, there's three related action items that you're gonna take up, four, five, and six. This is related to the opioid mass tort litigation that has been commenced on behalf of the city of Westland in 2018. There've been a number of other municipalities and states that have joined into this national settlement, and this is, we've talked it before about that litigation causing some bankruptcies and settlements out of those bankruptcy courts. This is a little bit like that, but over on the civil court side with these three, just three distributors and one manufacturer. It has both injunctive relief and monetary relief that these four will pay on a national basis, a portion of which will flow down to the state of Michigan and a portion of that will flow down to the city of Westland. This settlement that's addressed in these three different action items will result in approximately $1.1 million coming into the city of Westland over roughly 17 years. The first two payments would be expected to be in 2022 of about $64,000 each, and then annual payments of that amount on a going forward basis, assuming that enough parties settle and that ultimately the court approves the settlement. So this is a step in a process that has a lot of momentum at the national level. And the first step here is to say, in this motion, the resolution to authorize the partial settlement of the national prescriptive opioid litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item five, approval of resolution authorizing entry of state-local government intrastate agreement concerning allocation of settlement proceedings in the national opioids litigation. If approved, it authorizes the mayor, city clerk, and attorneys for the city to enter into the state-local settlement and to execute the necessary paperwork to effectuate the resolution.
But please say again. Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Goddow. Mr. Fasson, anything additional to offer there?
I would just say that this second item relates to us advising at the national level that we agree to the state-local government agreements, but we're also advising them that we're not using the national default distribution of funds between the state and the locals. Our, our council was able to negotiate a better deal with the state of Michigan Attorney General's Office for that split of funds, which is actually the next document.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item six, approval to authorize the mayor, city clerk, and attorneys for the city to enter into the Michigan State Subdivision Agreement for allocation of distributor settlement agreement and Jansen settlement agreement.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Mr. Fasson, anything else?
I'd just point out that because of the city council's decision to hire counsel, special counsel for this, that council has been able to negotiate a better percentage coming down to the municipalities. Under the national default, the cities would have only gotten 15% of these funds directly, but by negotiating with the state of Michigan Attorney General's Office, which obviously had to cooperate in this venture to, to this agreement, the municipalities will see 50% instead of 15% of direct payment. So this is a good example of where having council actively engaged resulted in a, in a better result. And I would just say, if anybody was listening, this involves the Jansen settlement agreement. Jansen is a spinout of Johnson &amp; Johnson, so earlier we talked about Johnson &amp; Johnson. Johnson &amp; Johnson is Jansen, if you will, for these purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item seven, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker, will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It's a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Sir?
My name is Ben Boshaw. I live over on Grayson Belvo. I spoke to you at this meeting about the proposed land division, and I thank everyone that responded, any residents' calls that we asked questions since then. We received notice of a public meeting for the 13th at 5:30 PM here at City Hall, and it's my understanding that the council members are not obligated to join, but the residents and I would hope to see all of you there so that we feel that you weren't given proper information on the issue prior to, and that that would be a good place for you to get the information that you missed out on this point. And I would also like, I don't know if Mr. Black, the clerk, would be there or the mayor, but I would like to see all of you there, possible, and just thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone on my left? Sir?
I just wanted to come up and say thank you once for approving next year's 10th Annual All-American Wayne Road Cruise. We look forward to bringing a big event to the community again, and wanted to wish everybody up here a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Don. Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Deanna.
Yeah, city council, mayor, and those of you in, there was a very serious personal attack on Art Warren, and it really disturbed me and many of us in regards to what had occurred. So it was hateful, there were lies, and I have to tell you, I know this man for years. I've worked with him at the Detroit Public Schools. He's always displayed courtesy and respect to everyone. He's, I've volunteered with him. He's never displayed anything other than being just a great guy and wanting to help the city. He's honest, he's compassionate, very intelligent and very, very, very talented, and always volunteering to help people. I was there when these accusations occurred against him, and there was nothing, no foul play. And anytime anyone wants to, to ask him for any help, he's always there, and he's a very, very good man, and I just wanted to state that. That's why every time something comes up, they say, Art Warren, can you do this? Art Warren, can you volunteer for this? Can you be on this committee? That's because he is a good man, and, and he is, he has the integrity that displays that type of person. And I just wanted to come up and say that any accusations, I've never seen anything to bear negative against him. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone else on my left?
Lori Wilson, Westland. Mayor, if you want to remove me from the ethics committee, that's up to you, but I have something to say too. But first, Jim Goddow, Santa Claus told me that if you ever want to quit politics, you had a job. We had a wonderful time at Norwain. The Pizza Palooza was great. It was absolutely, I learned a new game, probably a never repeated. Mike Landau will just blow you out with the quarters. But what I have to say is, is in reference, as Deanna said, to the comments that were made last meeting and the comments that are being made on social media. Attacking somebody by calling them an attack dog, that being a black man, you are denigrating him, his heritage, his culture. You're, by not, by people not standing up to these comments, that's wrong. I'm here to say, I was at that primary election night. I sat behind a table with Mike Ready. I sat there and I watched, and I watched people. What was the accusation? Never happened. It never happened. I have known Mr. Warren for over 25 years. I have been accused of being girlfriend, woman friend, 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 whatever. I am a friend, and a friend will come up and tell the truth. It never happened. You guys have, I'll see you next two weeks. Oh, I wanted to ask one other question. What was DTE digging up all these big giant poles on Van Moore? Not the pole poles to stand up, but the ones that are actually in the ground. I was just wondering, is that part of their maintenance for the power outages, or if somebody could find that out?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience? Ray?
Of course, I just wanted to wait and see who all is coming up here first, and after I come up.
Save the best for last, huh, Ray?
Yep. Save the best for last and raise back. And I'll tell you, ooh, I've been there 10 weeks in Redford, and what does, what I'm talking about is the Citizens Academy. I got this certificate. It says, Redford Township Police Department, Citizens of Police Academy, was honored to Mr. Ray Schuholtz. I am so proud of this, and I want to talk a little bit about this tonight. So what that is, Citizens Academy is kinda helping out the police out there too, and get to learn what the police do go through. They go through a lot of different type of training. I went through the court system, see how they do their courts and all that. I also went to a, a shoot, wound up shootings with the guns, was a pellet gun, and it was very interesting. Of course, I did a good job on that one, too. How to protect yourself when you're out there, and hopefully I never had to call somebody or something, you know? But it's scary. We're in a whole different world out there, so I know what police are going through. And I'm also going to be riding, I ride along for four hours with an officer. I don't know if he's gonna like that one or not, but I'll be talking about mental health. And of course, they are really good about mental health there too, because I've been, have been teaching them about that since I've been there, kinda bringing it up to them, how important it really is. And also, I wanted to bring up too, you know, a lot of times we put mental health under the rug and we also put respect underneath the rug. We need to take the respect out and have respect for one another, because you know, we all don't have to like each other's opinions, but we got to learn how to deal with it. Like I have to be professional, and that's the way it should be. Matter of fact, YouTube has gone a long ways, because how we present ourselves out there really shows a lot. So I've been watching it, so, so I've seen enough. So, anyway, I see people are doing a good job here. I did enjoy the mayor's thing, and the mayor's of the Westland here was very good. Also planning going to the tree lighting this week. Have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? All right, I will close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
All right, thank you, city council president. First of all, I want to thank everybody that, that came out for my 2021 State of the City address. If you were not able to attend, you can view it on thecityofwestland.com. The city's- the city's WLND cable station, and the Westland YouTube station. Just want to remind council that we're going to see a road closure at the intersection of Warren Road and Newburgh, which I believe started today. It's going to take about a week. We've got a water main issue on that corner that we're going to be trying to get taken care of before the weather gets too bad. We're going to remind everybody that this Wednesday, December 8th, we'll gather here in front of Westland City Hall for our Deck the City Hall event. The fun starts at 5:30. This year, it will be an outdoor event, so please dress warm. We're going to expect Mr. and Mrs. Claus to visit the city again this year. There's going to be hot chocolate, goodie bags for the children. There's going to be a judging of a poster contest by the Wayne Westland School students depicting what a holiday season means to me. And there'll be a lot of other things, including sing-along. So we invite everybody, the event starts at 5:30. We're inviting all of our elected officials to come out and lead us in carols this year. So we're going to need a lot of help with that. It's also the time here we kick off our All-American Decorating Contest for residents that, if you want to nominate yourself or a neighbor or a business that you see really going over and above this year for their holiday display, you can vote for them on thecityofwestland.com. That contest is open until December 24th, and we will announce the winners here at City Council on January 3rd. Just a reminder that curbside compost ends this week. This will wrap it up for the year. If you're trying to beat the buzzer, you can, just a reminder, you can put out 10 compost bags or five garbage cans on your regularly scheduled garbage day. Council, we're going to be hosting a COVID vaccination booster clinic next week. It's Tuesday, December 14th. It's at the Friendship Center. Any eligible Westland resident that would like to participate, you can call my office for an appointment or for more information to find out if you're eligible, or if you'd like to be considered for future events if you're not, if you don't quite meet the six-month booster limit. So just give us a call at our office, and that's going to be a partnership between the Westland Fire Department and Kroger Pharmacy. And with that, council, I appreciate moving forward tonight on the items that were on the agenda, the appointments of the people that were in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else from the city attorney's office today?
Anything else? I like the way you phrase it. Yes, therefore, yes. No, I just want to thank council for shifting and schedule around to make time for the study session by Zoom at 5:30 with Mark Bernstein, so that you could get updated on the opioid settlements. In this national litigation, there's so many moving parts, and they move so quickly, and they're so voluminous and complicated. So trying to keep, make sure council's informed. I appreciate you being flexible in that regards, and we'll continue to try to give you as much information as we can based on the deadlines that are, that keep popping up by the court. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Moving to council comments, we'll begin with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, President Hart. I'll just start with a quick announcement. The December Coffee Hour for State Representative Coleman and Wayne County Commissioner Anderson is canceled. It was supposed to be the 13th. They're going to resume on January 10th, 9:00 a.m. at the library. So they will not be there next week at the library, just so everybody's aware. I'll take a moment to congratulate all the appointments and reappointments. Thanks for sticking it out the whole meeting, and thanks for your service. It doesn't pay much, you know, that's been said before, but it's really important to have all the boards and commissioners being really involved and making good decisions before that stuff comes to us to make decisions on. So when we all work together, I think we work a little bit better. So thank you for your service. Ben had mentioned about the Bellevue and Grace meeting. So I do plan on attending. We do run into an issue when seven council members are there, actually, four or more, that's not considered an open meeting. And if four or more of us are talking about which way we're going to vote, or we can't have that discussion outside of an open meeting. I do plan on being there, but if there are four or more of us there, I wouldn't plan on getting any feedback from us, because we just, we can't be doing that outside the open meeting. But I do plan on being there and talking with the residents. Ray, congratulations on completing the citizens' police academy over there in Redford. I know it's something you've been talking to me about for a few months, and glad to have you back at the council meetings now. So thanks for all you do. Just a couple other side notes here. I'm not sure if, how many of the council members have seen, there's a Facebook page called Vibrations in Wayne, Westland, and Canton. It's been going on for about three years. It's kind of an anomaly where people are posting videos in their houses. Sometimes the pictures are shaking on the wall, different things, and it goes right up 275 in those three cities. And I just want to thank Vic Barra. One of the residents actually reached out to him today, and he went out to investigate. There is some news coverage of it, I think, at least about two years ago. And I've been in minor communication with some of the folks on that page, and it's been continuing for a few years. So I don't know if the mayor's heard of it or not, but you know, there should be some sort of investigation, whether we do it with the three cities combined or not. I think some of those residents do deserve some answers. And again, it's been going on for a couple of years now, so. Some of you might have noticed some new bus stop coverings going up around town. That's been something we've been waiting all year for. I think Councilman McDermott and I, and maybe Councilwoman Rukowski, had talked about it a little bit during our budget meetings. But I really want to thank Devin Adams, because a lot of ideas get thrown out in those budget meetings, and that was one that Devin just kind of grabbed onto and said, "Hey, I'm going to get on the phone with Smart Bus." And the city paid for the concrete pads, the bus stop coverings, the benches. That was paid for by Smart. They chose the stops that have the most usage. Some of them have a solar panel on top, so you can charge your phone while you're at the bus stop. It looks good, and it's, I think it's a good service for a lot of the residents that use the bus stops during the winter months and when it's raining. So I just want to thank Councilman McDermott for that, and the mayor, and Devin, for staying on top of that. I think the major delay in that was working with the county. They're extremely slow with the permitting and trying to get that done. So I think next year, I'm going to look at maybe talking with some of the council members to do a couple more around town. The last thing, I do have a long list, but the last thing I want to mention is Hawthorne Valley. Again, I'd like to know what's going to be done with that. This has been going on for so many years now, and I had asked for it to be boarded up. It was boarded up. Neighborhood kids go over there, they bust it right back open, break into the building. It's a hazardous building. It's in terrible, terrible condition. It had several fires. The inside is more than condemned. Nobody should be entering that building, and it keeps happening. I've been told that we're looking at maybe getting it demolished using brownfield funds, but you know, again, winter's coming up, and there's no movement on it. And this is a big property in Westland. It's a huge liability for the city if something happens there. So I really want to see some action on that. If not, I mean, if we can do it immediately, I would support that. But as soon as the spring comes, we need to get on that, because again, it's a major, major liability. The building was not in that condition when the city got a hold of it. The city got a hold of it. It was closed. I talked to a couple residents that lived behind there. They were actually excited that the city got a hold of the property. They thought it was going to be maintained, and it turned out to be a complete disaster. So I want to see some movement on that. I'll save the rest of my comments for next meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. First, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Jawad Hashem on her appointment to the Tifa Board. Thank you for stepping forward, offer to sit on that commission, and I'm sure you'll do a great job on it. To Mel and Dennis, thank you for continuing to serve on the Board of Review. You guys do a great job, and it's a thankless job sitting on the Board of Review. But you guys both do a great job, and thanks again for stepping forward to continue to serve on that board. I'd also like to congratulate and welcome Officer Rice, who was sworn in earlier this evening, to the Westland Police Department. And as the mayor mentioned, Newburgh Road is going to be closed, open, closed, over the course of the next probably several weeks in order to fix the water main break that occurred at that location. But I just want to thank our DPS workers, who this time of year, unfortunately, we're going to experience a lot more of those water main breaks as they occur every winter. And our guys are out there, guys and gals, are out there as soon as they get notice of those water main breaks in some of the worst weather conditions to work under. So they deserve a lot of credit, and thanks for, you know, stepping up and doing their job under terrible conditions. So that's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rukowski?
Good evening. In response to the meeting on the 13th, it is my intention to be there. I know we've spoken several times, so you'll see me at that meeting. I wanted to congratulate our new appointee and our two reappointments for continuing to serve in our community. It takes all of us, and your jobs are not always glamorous, but they are needed and welcomed and greatly appreciated. So thank you. I'd like to welcome Officer Rice as a newly-uniformed officer to our Westland Police Department. I was a graduate of Garden City High School, and the last name Rice is quite familiar. We won't age his mom for her. But what a nice treat to see the next generation of my scholastic family becoming adults. And I think it's just as important as a mother that I take a pause, and I want to thank the council president for giving us the opportunity to collectively pause as a community to recognize the tragic events that happened in Oxford. And it's just every parent's nightmare, isn't it? And you know, it's, you know, we could pass resolutions. We can give our thoughts and prayers, but it's not enough. It's not enough for our children. We're failing them. They didn't sign up for this. This is not the way it's supposed to be. So I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to ask my colleagues, to sign up with me, to reach out to our legislators, our representatives, our senators, our congresspeople, to act, to stop this, whatever it is that needs to happen, be it mental health care, be it stronger gun laws for minors. We cannot continue to lose our nation's greatest resource, and that is our children. It is unacceptable, and it has to end. These children's lives cannot be dishonored by this foolishness continuing to happen. Every 50 days, there's an incident at a school. We can't have that. We are a better country than that. And so I ask you, I implore you, to reach out to your legislators and ask them, honor our children, protect our children. We send them to school. We think they're going to be safe. They think they're going to be safe. And now there are lives that will never, ever be the same. That whole community will never be the same. And thankfully, because of the responsiveness of our police department and our fire department when something like that happens here, and thank God, we had a totally different outcome. But it affects everyone. And so, you know, we want to wrap our children in bubble wrap. We want to follow them to school, and clearly, that's not an answer. But what we can do is demand better for them. So with that, I look forward to decking our city halls, but I would be remiss to say that it'll be a little bit different this year. So God bless.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next is Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening, and thank you to my colleague for her strong and stirring words on this issue. I completely agree that thoughts and prayers oftentimes are not enough, and that we need some real tangible action that we can take on this. So thank you to my colleague, Councilwoman Rukowski. I wanted to mention that I, too, will be at the meeting in regards to the Bellevue, Gray Street, and the tree situation. So, you know, look forward to getting resident input and, you know, hearing more from the city on that issue. So I, too, will be there as well. I wanted to thank the administration, Mayor Wild, and in particular, Devin Adams, in regards to the covered bus stations. It's something that my colleague, Councilman Hersberg, brought up here earlier. Prior to myself being on council, I know that Councilman Hersberg had been advocating for that for a number of years through a couple of different budget study sessions. And I want to thank the administration, in particular, all the work that Devin did, Peter's advocacy, and then everybody here on the council as we all came together to support building three brand-new covered bus stops. It's nice that some of our smart riders at three of our busiest stops won't have to wait out in the elements anymore. In particular, people with disabilities often, and people who are differently abled, ride our smart bus system, and so having them not have to wait out in the rain or the snow like that, having a lighted bus station is going to make it safer, and just a more enjoyable experience for people who have to use the smart bus system. So thank you to the administration, in particular, Devin, for working with Smart every step of the way, and to all of my colleagues for delivering on that for members of the community. Just a couple of other things to add in here. Thank you to the city attorney and all the work that they've been doing on the opioid litigation situation. You know, not only, it's been quite a busy process with a lot of moving pieces, as Attorney Fasson mentioned earlier, but keeping us as a council updated every step of the process. So I appreciate what the administration and the city attorney has done to keep us up to date in where the settlement is at. I'd like to thank our board and commission members who are reappointed and newly appointed. So to Ms. Jawad Hashem, to Mr. Talkstein and Mr. Wees, thank you. And then also thank you to Officer Rice for your service here in the community, and we certainly welcome you here in the city of Westland and look forward to having you in our department for many years to come. The last thing that I, I also wanted to congratulate Ray Shoeholz, excuse me, before I get to my last item, for his certification in the Redford Citizens Police Academy. So Ray, well-deserved, as always. I know that you're in more communities in Westland, working all over Metro Detroit as a tireless advocate for people who are differently abled and for the mental health community. So just another notch on Ray's belt for the amazing work he's been doing. The last thing I wanted to talk about, many of you, if you followed the news over the last month, have seen that we have nationally passed a bipartisan infrastructure bill. And Lord knows, there's, it's not often when Republicans and Democrats can come together, but President Biden delivered on the promise of Infrastructure Week. After four years of talking about it, we delivered on the promise of Infrastructure Week. And while we don't know the specifics in terms of what this is going to mean for the city of Westland, we do know that in terms of the state of Michigan, we are going to get some significant resources back here. And these resources are going to stand to help repair our roads and bridges. The American Society of Civil Engineers rated Michigan a D-plus rating in terms of the quality of our roads and bridges. And we are expected to see $7.3 billion here in the state in terms of that bipartisan funding coming back to our state to work on highway repairs. $563 million for bridge replacements and repairs. If any of you have driven along 94 and seen some of the decrepit condition of our overpasses, you know that it's long overdue, that we need some significant repairs to our bridges and overpasses. We can expect to see, not necessarily in Michigan, but, you know, nationwide, up to $1 billion in money for bus and rail lines and in terms of improving public transit and mass transit. We're going to see upwards of $100 million to work on urban and rural broadband coverage. You know, we've seen, especially in light of the pandemic, kids going to McDonald's and Burger King's and other fast-food restaurants, or having to park school buses all over the community in order to get Wi-Fi access to kids. So we're going to see significant upgrades here in our state in terms of broadband access and Wi-Fi access for our kids. We're going to see between $200 to $300 million in water restoration for the Great Lakes, and also money to work on cleaning up lead pipe situations. While we've been, you know, kind of ahead of the curve in addressing that here in Westland, some of our neighboring communities like the city of Wayne, and certainly, obviously, Flint, has made national attention in Benton Harbor as well. So we're going to see some money to not only help with Great Lakes water restoration, but also with the lead pipe issues here as well. And, you know, one of the things I'm excited about is this is also going to mean good-paying jobs, union labor, jobs that are going to allow people to collectively bargain and have good wages, good benefits, and safe working conditions. And so while we heard a lot of talk about infrastructure, I am glad that President Biden, Vice President Harris, members of Congress on both sides of the aisle, Democrats and Republicans, were able to come together and make good on the promise of Infrastructure Week. And, you know, I, for one, am excited to see what tangibly we're going to get here in the city of Westland, and how we can work together as a council, with the administration, and as a community to see where we can make and continue to make some progress and improvements on our infrastructure. Lord knows, as someone who, like many Westland residents, experienced flooding this summer, I think that is something that a lot of residents are looking forward to seeing, where we can make upgrades and improvements as well. So, uh, it's nice to be able to, uh, come together as a country for once and deliver on something for the people. And with that, I, I look forward to seeing many of you here Wednesday, and residents also at the, at the Bellevue Grace meeting, and I bid you a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Pro Tem Londo?
Thanks, President Hart. Um, thank you for leading us at a moment of silence, or not leading us, um, asking for a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting for the lives that were lost in Oxford. Also tonight, thought we had a great agenda, a lot of great things on the agenda. You know, three new police cars, um, three great appointments, Mel Talkstein, Dennis Wies, and Bridget Jawad. So thank you all for, uh, continuing to serve or beginning to serve in our community. We appreciate you. Also, welcome to Officer, I wouldn't say welcome, congratulations to Officer Cole Rice. Uh, this is a gentleman who was just sworn in tonight at our council meeting. Not only was he sworn in tonight, he was, um, previous Westland Police Explorer and a Westland Police Service aide. So he's been, he came up through the ranks, came up the right way. So thank you, Chief, for, uh, bringing him up, and I look forward to work with him. Want to thank everybody that, uh, participated in the Veteran Meal Program at the Wayne Ford Civic League. I know we talked a little bit about the last council meeting, but, uh, the event was after the council meeting. So thank you, everyone, that contributed to it, um, everybody that was involved in it, from everyone from the mayor's staff, uh, both mayors from each community, uh, Council President Hart, uh, Andrew, Councilwoman Rukowski. Uh, many, 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 many people were involved with that. Uh, many of my colleagues were there as well to help, uh, deliver some of these meals out to the cars. And, um, it was really some touching moments. Um, I had, uh, you know, a few spouses come in, uh, because that's something that, is not really talked about a lot, but veteran spouses also are, um, eligible to receive veteran meals. And myself and Commissioner Anderson, I believe, were walking, went out to a car, and the lady just gave me the biggest hug and said, you have no idea what this means to me, and started bawling, and of course, I shed a few tears, so it really, really means a lot. So anybody that ever donates to that cause or volunteers for that cause, just know that you're making a huge difference in people's lives. Uh, and then, uh, Councilwoman-elect Sampi and I, uh, did some deliveries, and the same, the same thing happened. We had at least two homes where we went into, uh, one veteran female, same thing. Gave us the biggest hug, gave us each a gift bag with, with some goodies in there, and let us know that she's a notary republic. So sorry, uh, Clerk, Clerk LeBlanc, uh, we might have to help out a Westland business.
You're not breaking his heart.
Exactly. Might have to help out a Westland business and give her some, show her some love. But she was very, very appreciative. Um, another elderly, uh, female, we, we went to, you know, same thing. Just started, started crying and hugged both of us and just said, you know, this means the world to me. I haven't had a Thanksgiving dinner in almost ten years since my husband died, and this means the world to me. So thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody that's involved in that program. Um, it really does make a huge difference. I believe there was over three hundred and fifty meals distributed that day. Um, and we just, just, just came close to running out, but thank you to Councilwoman Rukowski for sourcing all the products. Uh, that leads me to my next event that we had. Uh, the city of Westland Police Department, in partnership with the Westland Goodfellows, did the Stuff a Swat Truck Event over at Meyer. And this year, there was a, um, I believe it was a record. They had over thirty shopping carts full of toys and goodies, and also over a thousand dollars in cash donated, uh, to the Westland Goodfellows to make sure no child goes without a Christmas here in Westland. And I would do want to give a shout out to, um, one of our longtime business owners in Westland. Jason Provenzola from Chatter's Bar donated five hundred dollars. Well, him and his staff donated five hundred dollars towards that cause. So thank you so mu- so much to Jason and Chatter's Bar. Um, we had the Norway Community Citizens Council event as well. I see many people in the audience that were there. I wasn't able to stick around too long, but, um, thank you to everybody that were able, was able to come to that. Um, thank you to my colleagues, Councilwoman Rukowski, and our new colleague, Councilwoman-elect Sampi, for helping and donating some mittens, gloves, and scarves, joining me in that cause and donating. They were, we were on a tight deadline to get those, and we went shopping the day before and got what we needed. So thank you. Thank you to Santa Claus. I won't say where Santa Claus came from, but Santa Claus did a fantastic job. Um, he came from the North Pole and did a fantastic job. Uh, the joy on his face and the children's face was, was a great thing to see. So, uh, I think everyone was, everyone enjoyed themselves, and looking forward to the Deck the City Hall event. And I'll also be at the, um, the, uh, the Bellevue, um, event as well in a couple of days. And as Councilman Hersberg said, that's something where we can't really deliberate at. That's more of an informational meeting. It's not a public meeting like a council meeting or a study session, so we can't get into, like, back and forth. If you want to talk to any of us offline, before the meeting, after the meeting, but during the meeting, like he said, we won't be really participating. So don't think that we're not interested. If we're not participating, we'll be very interested, and we'll be taking notes and, um, making sure that your questions are answered. But we will be there. Thank you.
Open, go blue.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to, uh, thank my colleagues for, once again, taking every shred of anything I have left to talk about right off the table and making it all redundant. Uh, so thanks first, uh, of course, to Councilman Londo for taking everything that's left and also leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. Thank you very much. And I'd like to congratulate again, as everyone else has our appointments. Uh, the boards and commissions are really the backbone of this community, and we really lean heavily on the things that you do and the talents and skills that you bring to the table. Without you, all of this would just not even work. So thank you so much for being involved, and we, we really, really, really appreciate it, and we're really, really thankful. And the Board of Review especially, it is a very thankless job. I know that, I understand that. So I've actually walked in one time to just witness it for myself. Um, kudos to you. Uh, I owe you a round after the next meeting, so it's on me. I'd like to welcome Officer Rice again, uh, to, uh, Westland's finest and the finest police department in all of Western Wayne County, and I would say in the state of Michigan. So thank you, Chief, for, uh, doing that today and letting everybody see that. I think it's outstanding for his family to be a part of that and to be sworn in during our council meeting. It was fun, so thank you for that. Thank you to Attorney Fasson for all of your work and everything that you've done so far up until now. Um, he makes it look effortless, but I'll tell you, all those little details and all the work that he's been doing for the past two years on this legislation is nothing, or not legislation, shoot, litigation, excuse me, uh, is, is nothing short of strenuous. Um, so, I mean, he shows up on, uh, game day and makes it look effortlessly, but it, it is not. So thank you so much, Jim, and I extend our thanks to, uh, Mark Bernstein as well. Thank you. Uh, Mayor, outstanding State of the City. I think you did a fantastic job. Uh, again, um, you can tell how good your State of the City is when you find out how many community leaders from other cities are coming by to watch yours. Uh, and that's something to kind of consider. Um, we're, we're a benchmark example here in this community. It has a lot to do with all the people that we have here, our board and commission members, and it rolls all the way up through the administration and to the mayor. So thank you again for your work, and it was, it was actually a very good, uh, presentation. Um, with that, I'd like to, uh, again, thank my colleagues for joining me in that moment of silence. I'd like to thank everybody here in the, uh, audience for doing that as well. Uh, but just remember, it, it's much more than a moment of silence. Um, at some point, we're just going to have to start not being silent, right? Uh, so we're going to have to start communicating. We're going to have to start speaking. Um, a moment of silence is just that, for a minute, for us to pause and remember, but now we can't be silent anymore, and we really have to stand up. Uh, I, I don't care what side of the aisle you're on, um, we all agree that this is unacceptable, right? Right? So I, I think that we need to work, how we can work and wherever we can work. Uh, I love supporting my rights, and I agree, but the schools, we got an issue with the kids, and I just want them to be safe, that's all. Um, and Councilman Rukowski, happy to support you however you need. So I'm glad that you're picking up the mantle on that and giving us something to follow. I look forward to seeing what you put out soon.